I want to welcome you all to the June 25th, Council meeting. First of all, I want to thank you for a lot of your here because you're concerned citizens, or have ideas, or have thoughts, or comments, and we always welcome that. And as I've said in many different ways, in the paper, in the radio, my door's always open. I always answer my emails, I always answer my phone calls, so don't ever hesitate to call and let me know what your questions or concerns are, and I will try and address them as quickly as I can. So, but I appreciate you being here. Communication, well, let's see, we need to look at the minutes of the last meeting. Everybody had a chance to look at those?
Mark moved.
Brian seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Communications, Beth, do you have anything?
In your package, you've got the, we received a Main Street TIP allocation letter telling us we weren't going to be getting any of the excess. So it's a requirement every year. It should be right after. Well, after the minutes. There it is. Looks like this. Okay. So I just, it was addressed to the city council, and so I put T to T, so they didn't notify that we're not getting any extra funds. That's it.
Okay, that is. We never opened a public hearing for these vacations, right?
Not yet. That's the first night.
So we need to open a public hearing for those.
Yeah, but we need to take Hearn off.
Yeah, before we start that first one, the one under Hearn, they pulled that back out, they're not going to be making a petition to vacate, so we can strike that. So they could just be on the Shelton, so we need to open a public hearing for the Shelton petition. What do we need to do?
You can open it from the chair, you can ask for a motion, whatever you want.
Motion for a public hearing?
That's fine.
We have a motion. Okay, Brian moved. Okay, John seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there somebody here from that Shelton, or I don't see Heather out there anywhere? So, I assume there's a map in here somewhere?
There's a packet. It's right behind.
Do you all have a map in front of you?
It's right behind, except I'll just put it here.
There's a lot of papers here.
This one right here.
Okay, got it. correct? Is that what the wanting to do?
Oh, yeah.
Are you reading through all this paperwork right now?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, what's a little different about this request, and I was familiar with it before it came up, is there's a, normally, when an alley or public way is vacated, depending on how it's plotted, normally the default, when the city steps away and grants a vacation in times that are worse, the default by virtue applies each of the neighboring property owners essentially will be out of the claim to the center of the road. There was a prior petition to vacate, and it's in your, in your package, that was granted in 1994. And what's unusual, at least I've never experienced that before, is that petition to vacate asked to vacate half of that area. Okay? And so this, that is the southern half, I believe. And so this petition to vacate is asking for the other half. So it's unusual from that perspective. One of the things I always point out, when we get a petition to vacate, is that it's important to keep in mind, the city is not giving property. The city is merely vacating its public right to use this. So we are not making, ever, ever making any guarantees, warranties, or promises of what that means for the adjacent homeowners. When we say typically the adjacent homeowners claim to the center of the vacated area, that's just typically what happens under Indiana property law. We're never in the position of warranting for any particular case, what's going to happen in this case. So I think it's somewhat ambiguous if this is granted. It's somewhat ambiguous what the result is. And I think that's for the neighboring property owners to discuss. I think there's a letter of objection here from some adjacent property owners, from attorney at the mall, and, but I won't speak to...
That's Hearn.
I'm sorry, am I looking at Hearn again? I'm sorry.
Yes, you're looking through.
I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry. I was looking through one you canceled. When anyone requests a petition to vacate, yes, that's typically what happens, is that neighbors from both sides, as not a property law, claim to the center. There's nothing in the law that prohibits you from granting it. Granting a vacation does require the passage of ordinance. There's nothing requiring that you grant it, not entitlements. There's nothing requiring that they be here. As long as you have a public hearing and the public's had an opportunity to speak to it, you can determine to pass the ordinance. It can die for lack of vote, or lack of second, or lack of motion, I'm sorry, or lack of second, or it can fail with the required votes. All of those options when it comes to a petition to vacate.
So who's the beneficiary in 94?
94 was the other petition, I'm sorry. That doesn't apply.
That's the one that's withdrawn.
That's the one that's withdrawn. I'm just...
Oh, okay, all right, okay, all right. So, so in this case, it would be a half and a half, half and a half gain, right?
That is typical of, again, that's typical property law. The city doesn't make any warranties about what happens when it vacates the property. It's not the city's business what happens.
Does anybody have any comment to this? I don't know everyone out there, but does anybody have knowledge of this vacation request?
I'm representing my mother on it.
You're representing your mom?
Yes.
Okay. So, do you have anything you need to suggest, or add, or comment on?
Me and the neighbors both talked about it, and we're both okay with it. The city is, I mean, it doesn't get used that much, and...
Okay. So, Andy, do we just go ahead with a motion to vacate?
Well, you need to close the public hearing first, if there's no more public comment.
I would say, he's saying he represented his mother, but you'd say who he was, or who he was.
Yeah, I need his name.
Timothy J. Shelton.
Timothy J., thank you.
Shelton.
Was it an alleyway, right? Was it an alleyway?
Yes.
I guess not, I mean, unmaintained.
So you guys are already maintaining your status?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like a motion to close the public hearing. It's been moved and seconded by Brian and John. So, all in favor say aye. Now, do we need a, we need a motion to vacate?
It can't be the ordinance. We have no hits. We have an ordinance here, we like the other one. So we have to make sure it's ordinance. I think we do all three meetings, and you just have to do...
Anybody have a title only?
They had to have a hearing.
That's it.
What's he talking about? Behind his house?
This is seconded, all in favor say aye.
It's in the, they take the flat, it's on page eight.
It's on Flat and Drive in the city of Rochester. Ordinance number 13 dash 2024, ordinance vacating public drive, part of East-West Drive within the original and subsequent flats in the city of Rochester. Motion to approve that. Right, we have a motion for the third reading.
Motion for the third?
All in favor say aye.
It's good, read it three times.
It's good, read it three times. You can read it by title only, all three.
Make a motion.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that one, sorry.
Make a motion, read it by title only. Brian seconded.
Ordinance number 13 dash 2024, it's vacating public drive, part of East-West Drive within the original and subsequent flats in the city of Rochester.
Motion to approve.
Make a motion for the third reading by title only.
I second.
All in favor.
Ordinance number 13 dash 2024, ordinance vacating public drive, part of East-West Drive within the original and subsequent flats in the city of Rochester.
Do we have any motion to approve those?
I would say two.
Amy moves. Two seconds. All in favor, raise your right hand. Seven oh. Okay, very good. Okay, so, old business. Tonight, we're going to just have further discussion on the chickens. We're not voting on, we don't have an ordinance drawn up. I know there's some that have some further comment on that, so we're going to give you time to comment on the possibility of putting chickens in the, in the city. So, does anybody have any discussion they want to be heard?
Thank you.
Pam?
Can I quick pass out? Same thing, Beth. And then for later, I'm going to have to... Basically, what I just gave you, it gives you an idea of, that I was in real estate here for 46 years, both as a seller of real estate and as an appraiser. I don't know too many things, but I do know zoning, and I know real estate. And so I'm not going to read my resume there, it was just something for you to have. And I wanted to talk basically on, when the city had its zoning, just zoning, I was on the zoning board review, I was on the planning commission, and we went together with the county, emerged, and there was a comprehensive plan that was written, and I've given you four examples of what that was. But really what the plan was for, is so that we had similar areas where certain properties could be used, like downtown residential, or residential, like residential, industrial, commercial. And at the bottom of that, I'm just kind of talking about how you value property, and that is, there's three types of depreciation. One is physical, one is functional, and one is external. And the physical and the functional can be either curable, or it can be incurable. If, for example, you have peeling paint in your house, floor coverings that need to be fixed, if the cost to do that is less than the value it would give your property, then it's curable. Functional loss really has to do with where the location of the rooms are inside a piece of property. There was a house in Lubbock's for once, and when I went in the front door, there was a living room. And to the left of the living room, you walk through to the dining room. And then behind the dining room is the kitchen. And off the dining room to the right was a bath, their full bath. And upstairs were three bedrooms. But when they came down from the bedrooms, they had to turn left to go into that bathroom. They couldn't go into the living room. So that was a lot of functional loss in that piece of property. Curable or incurable, I was going to take up an enormous amount of value for that property because you had to walk through the bathroom to get to downstairs. Either stay upstairs or walk through the bathroom. But if they put an opening in that living room wall, it would cure that. So the cost of that was less than what I was going to appreciate that property. And external loss is always, always incurable, because it's somebody else's property, and you can't fix it. If you allow chickens in single-family residential areas, you will be lowering the value of that property in subdivisions and at the lake. The lake, really, I sit on the tax board, and it's the biggest tax base we have in the city. And really, Manitowoc Heights is number two. But chickens, I've appraised enough properties. One time, I looked at a piece of property in Knox, Stark County, and I asked the gentleman when I got there, I said, "What did you look at? Chickens out?" Because he knew I was coming. There were tons of them, all over the yard. And there was a 12-foot fence. And he said, "Now, they can just get out." They don't know lot lines. And if you're ever around a chicken coop, and people don't keep it clean, and it gets wet, they stink. And you're going to smell that quite ways from your own property. If you allow chickens in residential areas, instead of a housing agricultural areas, you will really diminish the value of property. If, if, when I was teaching real estate, I said to people, every time I thought about, "Well, how do you figure how much loss there would be for external loss?" And I always thought, if there was 100 people, how many people would live next to that? And I'm telling you, if you were to sell single-family homes in this community, I'm going to tell you that probably 95 to 97% of the people will not live next to somewhere where there's chickens next door. Don't do that. I'd answer any questions you have.
Thanks, Bill.
And then the second thing, I just gave you something, and I wanted to know, it has to do with trailers and campers on single streets. And I've given you pictures at the end there, that'll show you what you can see when you're back out of a driveway, which is relatively nothing, when there's a big trailer there. And campers as well. So I marked some spots maybe for your attorney to take a look at, and I'd be glad to talk to you about it at some other time when you want to come and check it. But it needs, like you've done, you've done something with golf carts, you've done something that, you know, the lady that couldn't, you know, they wouldn't take up her lease, you can, you can redo an ordinance really quickly. And I do, I did mark where adventure, I created my real estate campers, that's very much. But that would be up to you, attorney. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, anybody else want to get, be part of the chicken discussion?
I guess my question would be, how many chickens would diminish a property? If you only have three, or you only have an ordinance of four, they're not that awful to be around. I mean, we're not talking having roosters.
Most of the ordinance that I read are in the city of five or six max.
Exactly. Because I also provided it last time I was here as well. But why, like, how much would that diminish a property, just having a maximum of six? And you do have a chicken coop, and you do require a fence around the area.
Yeah, well, unfortunately, whoever you knew compliances with it is, they've got a lot of work to do, because I can tell you, going up and down the streets, what's not in compliance regarding an ordinance of four. Four chickens, six chickens, one chicken is going to diminish the value of the property. Not only just the smell, and that they can get out in my yard, or anybody else's yard, but they do bring with it raccoons, they bring coyotes, they bring things that can get in residential areas, but aren't typical there.
But the ordinance of animals does say that you can have an unlimited amount of animals less than a pound. So I can have 100 rats at my house, release them, and disrupt the public.
100 what?
Rats. Because anything less than a pound, there's no ordinance on.
They don't have one.
So, I mean, and that's what I'm saying.
Or they need to make one, then.
I can find a bigger nuisance than a chicken. I mean, I'm tired of getting a notice on my door saying, "Have you seen the specific cat?" No. Yeah, because that cat was let loose. So, and I mean, we get that every six months. So, what's, I mean, what's the difference of that, rather than, say, a chicken? And I mean, I'm, either way, I don't really care.
The city has an ordinance already that you can only have two dogs, up to two dogs in the city.
Three dogs.
Three dogs.
Well, three dogs or two cats. Like, when you have three dogs, you can have the two cats, yeah.
Ma'am, could we get your name for the record?
Jennifer Braxton, I'm the rabbits.
Oh, okay. That's my...
Thank you. If you're going to speak, would you mind giving your name first, so I can get it in the record? Thank you.
I mean, I'm just saying, and as he, as the mayor said last time, we could also get the neighbors to sign. Granted, our neighbor just moved, so ours would be a new neighbor now, but, I mean, if you are, granted, not a lot of people take care of their animals, I get that. But if you have a regiment cleaning, that can also help your garden area, if you have those garden beds that are up. It can help your grass grow, it can, I mean, chickens can also help the bugs, too. I did live in the country, we did raise chickens, and they did help with all the bug problem as well. But I mean, I know going down Pontiac Street, you hear all the dogs, you hear, you see all the loose cats, you see all this, and I know, you mentioned diseases. There's been 12 cases of diseases in the state of Indiana since 2022. And we are the number, we are the second most, the second state to produce the most eggs. So, it is also educational to have these type of animals as well, especially for the youth, especially since the 40 age population has declined. Now it's going up because of the simple fact that my generation has their kids going into 40 age. So I mean, it does open up a broad spectrum of things as well.
And I will say, when they made a comprehensive plan, they, they looked at that, and that's why they had agricultural zoning.
Yeah, but, okay. College student, I have my MBA. I mean, I'm loaded down with student loan debt. I can't go right now and buy a house out in the country, because the property prices have increased significantly. I mean, that's just how it is. Some people cannot do that financially.
So, yeah, as a point of reference, so I approached Trent related to the subject, because there is a large amount of robust conversation related to that. I'd also been asked to reach out to the Indiana Department of, or Board of Animal Health, as well as the local animal shelter, to obtain information, which was all enlightening. Obviously, if this was decided, there is favorable information and unfavorable information. So I think that's too subjective to make a decision. So I circled back around with Trent and asked if I could do a simple, just beta test survey using the Survey Monkey, to throw it out there on if you knew you grew up in Rochester, just to get a little inkling of what it would be. And when I did the survey, I did not put it in any specific realm, I just called it the Chicken Interest Survey. And all I stated was backyard chickens should be allowed in the city of Rochester. I did not skew the results, I did not skew the language. And oddly enough, we are half and half with the initial, so we have half, actually, it's four more that are disagreeable towards it than are agreeable. So, right now, honestly, I wasn't, it's not an academic survey I did, but currently, in my opinion, it is so close, and there is so much work to be done. I honestly feel like that unless we, unless this council felt like they wanted to do more of a robust survey, it really is too close for us to put a lot of effort and time into it right now. Not that never, but it is, I mean, honestly, that what we had discussed was, we are beholden to the taxpayers, all of them, chicken lovers and chicken people who are not chicken people, and agnostic chicken people, which I am an agnostic, I don't, neither way. But right now, looking at just a inkling of a survey, it appears that the results say that the community is completely and half related to this. And to me, that feels like it's too close to put a lot of effort and time into it, but that's just my opinion. Like I said, I am agnostic related to chickens, but I just think that we represent all the taxpayers.
I think what I would suggest is, this council be prepared next meeting to vote, either to proceed with looking at an ordinance for it, or vote against proceeding on it, is what I would ask, and what I more, maybe some more data to look at, but that's what I suggested this time, be prepared to make a decision next month, whether to go over with an ordinance or not.
I wouldn't want people to be unfair in saying we didn't make this readily acceptable.
One, I only saw the survey yesterday, and I'm on Facebook constantly.
Yeah.
So I don't think that's fair, because I don't think it's very far.
Well, that's why I said, it was a beta test. It wasn't to be like something scientific, it was just to have some data here to at least start the conversation, or direct it, so.
Right, I'm just saying, for me personally, I only saw it yesterday.
Yeah, well, that's where we're going, in 30 days.
Well, you may want to check with real estate agents, who really are selling pieces of property here. They'll tell you, whether they think it's a good idea or not.
All right. Phil Klein?
I'm not here for this reason, but I don't think you have chickens in the city limits. It just doesn't make sense to me. Why have chickens in town? I just don't see it.
Then why have birds? Insight.
Okay, I appreciate...
I mean, that's where we're going to go with.
Well, I know, I appreciate your comments. We're not going to spend all evening on this, believe me, we've got other stuff that's precedent over that. So, appreciate your comments, appreciate your views, we'll spend another... Let's, to be fair, since...
Yeah, yeah.
To be fair, let's just give a little more time, you know, I have a reminder.
Well, I, I, I'm with Pam Fish, I mean, as far as where I'm coming from on this approach, it's just not, I, I'm not going to get there with chickens, because if that saves anybody some time, I'm, I'm not, I'm with five animals in Rochester.
You guys saying if you want to vote on it tonight, that's fine. It's up to you.
But there's no motion to create, make a resolution to allow chickens.
Nothing to vote on.
Unless somebody makes a motion to allow chickens in the city.
For, for request ordinance, we may... Does anybody want to make a motion to that regard? No, we do not.
Trent?
Yes?
I think, to be fair to everybody, I think he should wait until next month, just to give, give more information and everything, instead of just, some people will call this railroading it, and you don't want a railroad just, that's my opinion.
We have been on that chicken issue for...
That's fine.
Many, many years, okay? And it has been, and the people that have contacted me, I have not gotten one positive response. And I do receive phone calls, and I do, and I talk to people in town, and I have not gotten anybody to say, "Oh, yes, I would love it if my neighbor had chickens." No one has said that. They've all said, "You gotta be kidding me." And I am, like Bobby said, I agree with what Pam said wholeheartedly, but I have been against the chickens for 14 years now. That's where I was.
I'm a little late, Angela Miller, I'm a little late to me. I'm her mother, Jennifer Braxton's mother. I'm a little late because I had to take my grandson's poultry to get... I'm a little late because I had to take my grandson's poultry to get a blood test for Salmonella plinum, which is eradicated in the United States, but they still blood test it. The same thing can be done here now, it's avian flu. But I hear mallard ducks are carriers. Are we going to shoot all the mallard ducks on the lake because they're carriers? What are we doing? Are the geese and the ducks, is that population thin down on the lake? They enjoy their poultry on the lake. They watch the little babies follow their mothers in the springtime. So there's not likely going to be a million people go out and buy chickens, you know? However many there may be, okay? That's just not going to happen.
The comparison is not apples to apples. They're in their habitat.
Huh?
The city is not the habitat of a chicken, so that's not apples to apples. It's not a real good comparison.
So you're saying the lake should, if it's determined that mallard ducks definitely are carriers for avian flu, what is the city going to do to protect?
We don't have jurisdiction over that, the lake.
It's not part of this...
It's part of the city, but the DNR controls what we do on that lake. Am I incorrect?
Very true, especially with wildlife.
Okay.
In fact, there are efforts to control them as well out there, so.
I mean, honestly, there could be arguments on both sides. We're never going to win the arguments because everyone's got a strong opinion, right? And I think it goes back to just the practical, I don't think it's wanting to be disrespectful or say your opinion's wrong, or Brian's right, or we're all wrong, and everyone's right. I think it goes back to the practicality nature of, is it the best decision for the city of Rochester for all residents, right? And so no one wants to take away property rights or American freedom, but I think you have to be very cautious of what we allow in the city dependent upon all residents. So I know some people will be really disappointed and are disappointed because they, they really want chickens. But I think you have to look at the current climate of what the community is and then make a decision based on that fact. Because we can argue back and forth, but it's really not super productive. I'm not trying to be rude, but you know, I just think that we have to, we are all in this together. We're a community together. There are chicken lovers and chicken haters and agnostic chicken people. So we just have to figure out what makes the most sense.
I, I'm going to go with what John said. Had this, Phil, had this been the first time we've been presented, I would agree that to make a decision tonight would be kind of that way. Like you said, this is not new to this council. Every year, every couple of years, you know, so council, you decide, is there a motion to be made to pursue an ordinance for allowing chickens?
No.
I'm interested in pursuing allowing more, like, insight, just because I don't want anybody to say that we are unfair, but I don't think that we're going to do. The problem with that is I think that the council, we are, we feel strongly about it, so it'd probably be a wasted experiment. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so you're, you're okay with thinking not going forward or that nobody's making a motion? We're okay, just, okay, we're table on that then, so. Okay, next item, rabbits. And I wanted, I thought Heather was going to be here, because that's, Andy, we talked a little bit about this. That kind of becomes a something that corrects or a...
Well, what part are we discussing exactly?
Well, I don't know.
Rabbits are considered in the zoning department a pet and a farm animal. So they're in both.
But it also is like, we're talking about the five animals per residence.
If she's making a request for the council to grant an exception, a permit for more than a normal number of animals, yes, that is certainly a council, the city council can do that.
So, and you want, give me a number you're looking at.
Like twenty.
Twenty max?
Yeah, twenty max.
They would be in cages or?
They would be in cages. As I proposed the last time, they would also be in a shed. And I would also plan on getting the yard around the shed fenced.
Good. So we're giving the exception over the five to allow her to have twenty, up to no more than twenty rabbits in the conditions, the facility she's described. Thoughts, comments, Phil?
Is this the same kind of discussion with the chicken? If you're not going, if you don't like the chickens, then why would you want the rabbits? Or if you want the rabbits, why don't you want the chicken? That's the way I'm seeing it, just being at a personal angle.
I think something to consider, two things on this. Do you want her to allow, do you want to allow her to have more than five animals? But then also, what is a farm animal? Because it says you're a farm animal in town. So I'm going to decide if rabbits are farm animals, if not, can she have more than one?
Yeah, and we're going down a slippery slope here. I mean, it's...
Unless I'm looking at that wrong.
No, I think, I think that's a relevant issue. But since it's already written in the statute that way, they can grant permit and be silent on that in the council forward they make. But yes, they can also say, "We make it part of our motion. We do not request for more, but we pass a motion declaring that we interpret it that they're not farm animals." They can do it that way as well.
Zoning is supposed to not take the liberty away from people living there. The whole purpose of zoning is really to protect the area. It's not to harm somebody from using the property. But there's all sorts of requirements for zoning. There's zoning where you can't open, you can't have an open fire in the city limits, whether you pay your taxes or not. It's not to harm the person who lives up on that property, but it's to protect the integrity of the neighborhood. And that's why you have limits on animals. There's probably twenty rabbits that go on the outside of my fence every day. But I don't want them in my yard because I don't want to hurt my dog. But zoning isn't to harm her. But when you live in an area where you have zoning requirements, you have to abide by those. And it isn't to harm anybody, it's to make the neighborhood conform to one another. And that really gives you the highest and best use for your property. You know, when I praise property, not only do they want the front and the back and the interior photos, they want to know what the side looks like from each, you know, from each direction so that the lender of a piece of property can see what's around there. When you live in single-family zoned areas, you need to keep a single family with not a bunch of animals around.
And I share Pam's view right down the line. I mean, I hate it that the individual can't have what they want.
I understand, I know.
But in, as a whole, we have to be considerate of the community.
One of the hardest things, as I said, to sit on any floor is to tell people that you like, no.
I know, and I hate that too. So your thoughts, anybody else have anything to consider on their rabbit thing tonight?
Very comfortable with five animals.
So we're table on that for now too, then. Do you have enough data on Dora?
Yes, I've got the maps, that's promised. So after much research and multiple conversations, this is where we have landed. Thanks to Harry Webb, Rochester Downtown Partnership, Andy Schatz, Dwayne Order, Alyssa Troutman, Julie, all of the members that we've spoken to. We have put some, in group, put some extensive time and thought and effort in determining what is to be in the yellow area and what is to be out. We, so as you see, the yellow area is the area in which the Dora would be active. And then obviously, the areas that are not yellow would be outside of the Dora boundaries. The red dots are designated permit teas. So those are the individuals that would have license from the Alcohol and Tobacco Commission and be able to use the Dora cup and participate in that way. Alyssa has been collecting...
So, yeah, I have to allocate, part of the application that we would send to the state, each business that will sell alcoholic beverages, if they want to sell the alcoholic beverage, that can be taken out of the bar or restaurant. They have to fill out this form. So I've got seven of the nine.
And I have two more here.
Well, that's, I counted her. So I've got seven of the nine establishments already have this form filled out.
Showing, showing that they're favorable and moving forward if we were to actually put an ordinance together.
And the other two, I, it's not that I have, I don't have them because they're not favorable. I just, we haven't gotten them yet.
So the green area is, was an extensive conversation that we had. We were attempting to determine if it made sense to allow an area in which special event permits could be done. So for example, if Brett from the Day of Landing wanted to come and during an event, set up an application in the Dora to be able to sell maybe his barbecue and a beer together, then that could be possible. So after much conversation, we determined that having it as far away from the restaurants here in the park, generally for purposes of events, would be something that the Dora team would be in favor of. So this is, we're not passing anything tonight. We aren't making any per se decisions. This is just for you to visually see what the suggested areas are. In addition, we have obtained the logistics side of things. So for individuals who are concerned with folks walking into their business, let's say they are not in favor, but they find themselves in the Dora, then we will have a nice decal sticker in which it would be, Julie came up with a cute idea of having it in the form so it is easily identifiable, either a beer mug or a wine glass, and it says "Dora Friendly." So they will have that, that will identify that the business is willing to allow individuals to walk into their business. If somebody does not have that, that would indicate that the individual business would not like them to walk in. So we don't want any fights or arguments, so that was the way to handle that. As well as a sticker that would be available for designated permit teas that do not want any outside adult beverages brought in. So it will say, "No outside adult beverages allowed in these premises." So they don't have to fight or argue with people either. Try to make it easy. These are all suggestions from the city of Logan's Court, as well as identified and massaged here with our current team. The signs would be on both, I think there's two exits for each of the businesses, so the exit signs would be on both sides, eight and a half by eleven. We decided to do a decal if we move forward, getting pricing. I do have some pricing in an email related to that. Alyssa has graciously offered to work with her vendor to provide a design for a cup and to help us to get pricing for that. I did meet with Rochester Downtown Partnership this morning. The board and they preliminarily approved preliminarily because obviously lots of other work has to be done. But if we do move forward, they would be the holder of the cups. It would be a fundraiser for them, so they would buy the cups and then resell pending everything, but we want to have as much work done. They would buy the cups and then they would resell them, and it would be a fundraiser for them, as well as the map that we would have for the QR code that would identify where the Dora is for people to identify that would be on their website. So I talked to Dwayne, he is not here tonight, but he has identified eleven different locations in which he would like to put conspicuous signs that it states in legislation. And he has identified the poles in which he would like to put those on if we do move forward. So much detail has been determined, as requested in between meetings. And then the pricing looks like the signs for the quantity that we were asking is a hundred and twenty for the adult beverage signs. Aluminum street signs would be three hundred and forty. Dora Friendly tags would be a hundred and ten. So that's where we're at.
So do you need any action from the council tonight or something?
I just, any other input or insight before we, because what, we had decided at the night that we would invest, that we would do things for it in a formal package unless...
Just a question on why are the buildings directly, at two ninth and eighth street, directly west of the courthouse, very yellow, but the next block where Webb's is, the buildings are not? You know, I know the sidewalk is, but there are no public teas in either of those blocks. So why one yellow, one not?
Good question. So this area right here was shown as kind of an event area, the area of Eighth Street and that Eighth Street where that is with that area where the vendor location is. That would give those businesses as well the opportunity to host after hours, which those are more likely through Webb in that block, so they did not want to be part of it. So people can walk by so that for ease of not walking up and down the sidewalks. But those buildings that are there have indicated either no interest or have said that they do not want to be part of that. So I can circle back around and talk to the ones I have not actually discussed if that would be available from there, but...
Let's see, the paper, the signs, the signage and the sticker, let's just make that.
So that was what I think Trent had discussed, asking me to get the cost for it so they can determine that. So that was one of the questions that they were asking me.
I said, you don't have any idea to pay for?
I said, the downtown partnership.
Well, I would, I would just think the businesses would be paying for their own stickers.
They would pay for their own signage, I think. Didn't we talk about that?
No, we did not talk, you just said to get the cost and then you wanted to have it stuck here related to that.
I was thinking for this paying the businesses, sorry.
I would think the businesses would pay for their own signage, for sure. I don't like, I hope to say I pay for any of them.
How much other...
The sign is, it looks like... I mean, so I talked to the council person from the city of Warsaw and just asked about that because we have not determined that, and I asked how they can handle that just for in case a person has a question like that. And he had indicated that the city was uncomfortable with paying for the starter kit, so they had asked for the businesses to split the cost of the starter kit. City Logan's Court is paying for a starter kit, so two different versions, but Warsaw was not comfortable with using taxpayer dollars to pay for the starter kit for each of the businesses Logan's Court was...
Honestly, the reason we're doing this will benefit the businesses as well. So, you know, I think there should be some law meeting there.
Don't you?
I, I can understand. I think they have, they should carry the full, they should not be, it's the city's responsibility or taxpayer's responsibility to pay for, you can bring your beer in here or something. I'm sorry, go on with that. Okay, will we update it next time with your order law?
So I will, I'll discuss that considering any related to the cost and how we can pursue all of that and then ask those additional businesses, and then we'll have more of the template. Andy, do we think that we can get that ready for July? Or, yeah, okay.
All right, yes, Paul. Andy, did you talk to anybody? Anybody with, from the county, using courthouse property there?
Yeah, they...
That's in yellow?
So I am going to follow up with them before we do that because we did not talk to them about the sidewalks. But we do have to have a safe place for people to walk, which was what the discussion point was. So they do not want their lawn to be used, which was the discussion point. Nor this area over here that's an open area. Yet they have shared that if the Dora is successful, they would consider us passing a second ordinance, which you can't do, for a special event area, only used for special events. But they want to see how the first ordinance goes before they are willing to address that. But they did share specifically not the lawn, specifically not the lot in which there will be new site. At this point, they are not willing to do that, which is fine.
And I, I know that the parking around the courthouse is not subject to the city's apartments, apartments. So then maybe somebody else will look at two.
I'm sorry.
To not have any, or not include, where the parking is around the courthouse, not include that in yellow at all.
You mean on Eighth Street?
On the south side of Eighth Street and then the east side of Main.
Oh, then that one, excluding the park, the sidewalk.
I understand. But I'll tell you, someone asked me if she coordinated that with the county.
Yes, Amy has been talking to the county. And part of our concept is, is that as you're out there going from establishment to establishment, and you happen to have a Dora cup in your hand, and you see somebody... and you happen to have a DORA cup in your hand and you see somebody and you cross the street, well now you can get in trouble because you just happen to be on Eighth Street where you're heading to another DORA establishment and you see somebody over there. So, do we want this so strict that, that you can't go over there with your glass and, and talk to somebody that's in a vehicle? And that was kind of the purpose of, if you're walking down Eighth Street to another establishment, include both sidewalks.
It was a safety thing, Brian, but I will, I will follow up as your request and just discuss that. Yeah, we're just trying to make sure that we think of all of the safety pieces and something that would be practical in execution so that it would not be difficult to legislate or to facilitate. But yes, I appreciate that. I will follow up with the county on the sidewalk piece, just to confirm that. And then I will follow up with the businesses as well, just to make sure indeed, some of the ones I did not hear, that they, they do not want to be... The hard part about picking and choosing a business in one block is that would make it difficult to enforce because you wouldn't have, you'd have one business on the block that would be DORA and one that would not. So, I think that would be difficult for anybody who wants to be part of that. But I will follow up for clarity soon.
Okay, anything else on that?
Any other questions, concerns, need to want to look into?
I have a question. When does it become public intoxication if you live four blocks away from downtown?
Anytime you, anytime you exit the DORA, there will be signs, anytime you exit the DORA, you are at your own risk.
So, then it's really not, it's only beneficial for the businesses and the people to live in.
That's what I'm asking. Well, it is, and I don't think you were at the last conversation or the first, well, the one that we had before, but it is a, it's an economic development driver to assist with restaurants in which they don't have to have the fences, so they can have outdoor seating and then like on court and typically brews, they can have people walk back and forth and it would be ease of use and not direction. So, it's really a tool mostly for downtowns. I mean, there are other places that do have different areas, but you have to have an anchor business that's either a distillery, a brewery or a winery. And currently as it stands, we don't have any of those other areas in the city of Rochester. We only have a brewery that's downtown, so that's why that was chosen as the area focus.
So, like, once you get off Main Street, all the roads behind it are fair game?
No, no, only the areas that are in yellow is where the...
I meant fair game for public intoxication, yeah.
For public intoxication, you have to demonstrate a danger to yourself or others. Not just having...
Walking money?
Not just drinking.
Not just having a cup.
And having it and you're just, you have to demonstrate a danger to yourself.
I don't...
Yeah, I understand.
So, they can, I think they can still get arrested for public intoxication within this yellow area.
They still have to, you know, abide by the laws. Yeah, it's just the law will say it's okay to have that cup.
And the purpose is for ease of moving from restaurant to restaurant and so that they can have those unfenced areas.
Okay.
I might have missed something, but is any of this in the paper? The yellow lines, the map?
The map, we're not there yet.
Anything about, as long you're going to be there, you're already asking about prices to the signs. So, you're gonna be there?
We're not there to publish it yet.
You're not there to publish it?
This is a public meeting, this is going to be on TV, it's going to be printed in the paper. You know, the map, I don't know if you're gonna distribute the map yet until we get further.
I mean, we have the preliminary map, but we don't have what I feel like is the finalized map, so...
We're still discussing, we're still discussing boundaries.
Yeah, we have, we were having lots of robust conversations.
Well, maybe we need another survey to the citizens of Rochester to ask if they want to promote alcohol on Main Street. Because that's what you're doing, you're promoting the use of alcohol. Sorry about all the people that have businesses with alcohol, but that's what the promotion is. And I have a son, I mean, he's in his thirties now, that had a problem with alcohol. So, now, and this started when he was a teen, probably because I was a dad, but his license is revoked and I imagine it's for a lifetime in his thirties. Why do we need it? Why do we need people on Main Street drinking alcohol? Kids are gonna see that, because I'm assuming that this is not an adult festival or whatever, there's gonna be kids there and they're gonna, and they're gonna see, well, this is okay. I'm gonna be like that, I'm gonna start now because I can buy the beer now. And, but then later, I'll be able to drink on Main Street.
And every decision we make at this, at City Council is super complicated, right?
It's on their selves.
Because there's all people on both sides. I think, you know, for this specific decision, it was something that was brought forth from the business owners and the legislators at the state. We, we did not come up with this idea, it wasn't something that the city of Rochester actually decided upon. It was something that the legislators at the state had offered as an economic development tool. And I completely understand your concerns because I also have a nonprofit that we assist individuals with substance use, so I get both sides, I totally get it. I think balancing all of the things for every decision is super hard. And I, I, all people know because I deal with the young lady that's walking in right now. We both worked together on that. At the same time, I do have to recognize that we didn't decide this, but we, we are researching it and providing the opportunity for business owners who are impacted or could benefit from having the ability to have alcohol or seating. It in no way is meant to promote the misuse of alcohol and in no way is it meant to promote anything that would be negative. Though, I do recognize that individuals, as in every situation, will misuse or potentially. I mean, there have been cities that have been doing this and nobody's had any issues thus far, I should say that to be fair. And there are cities the size of four hundred to sixty-five thousand who have done this and they have not yet had any issues. I know that a couple of our team members have went, mayors have felt, they have discussed, we have researched this to agnostia, just because we want to be respectful, right? We want to make sure we're making a fair and relevant and respectable decision, so... But yes, I do, I do get your concerns, so...
So, is there gonna be an ordinance on the noise complaint? Because let's admit, some drums are loud.
Okay, we've got ordinances for noise and stuff, but we really need to move along from this. We're early in the discussion, we're trying to get more planning done. You know, stay tuned. I mean, we're gonna talk about this for two or three or four more meetings before we ever get to the point where we're probably gonna be looking at an ordinance, so, but we got a ton of stuff I gotta do tonight, so...
Just one quick comment. Can you please put the agenda of this meeting in the paper?
It is.
When, where?
Posted it, isn't it? We posted it.
Posted on the outside.
Posted on the outside.
On the outside.
It doesn't have to be published in the newspaper, but...
Well, why don't you? No, seriously, why do not put the agenda in the paper, in the top of the town? Or, I mean, the school board posts what they're, they're going to talk about in the top of the town.
I think before it was a cost per visitor thing, right? But I don't know, Westwood, I don't...
I'm actually no longer with the Sentinel, but one of the issues that I'll speak on is that we never got the agenda in time to get it out to people to let, to let them know it's gonna be discussed.
Because of the two, uh, two, two times a week paper?
No, we would happily take, I know that, I'll answer for them now. If you send them an agenda, they will happily run it. We just don't get it in enough time to let people know.
For free?
For free.
Top of the town should be free, Brian.
It is.
It will run it for free? You're speaking for the Sentinel now?
I am still, I'll speak for the Sentinel.
Don't you say no to that?
Let me speak as the good treasurer. The press is only on Wednesdays and Saturdays. So, you're asking that we have a final agenda, you know, three or four days. I mean, I have to post on Friday nights, Tuesday meeting, so I have to have it on whatever last Friday was, to say, here's the agenda, here's the notice. So, it could possibly be in the paper on Saturday, but sometimes people change the agenda. I mean, you know, up until the very end, so...
It would be put in there, but it'd be subject to change because it changes on Mondays and Tuesdays.
I couldn't find it on the Rochester City Council website, the agenda for this meeting today. I couldn't find it.
I understand, sorry.
So, that...
Well, and I think it's partly, it's not, yes, I do agree with that, but it is always there for right now until we determine the backdoor is always there.
Who knows it's there?
Yeah.
Wasn't in the top of the town, go see the agenda on the Rochester City Council building. Not on the front, but on the side.
We are, we are rebuilding our website, so hopefully we can get it on the website at the very least, if we can get it a bit more time.
Yeah, that's our plan, it's just we don't have an IT person to do that yet.
Okay, we're going on. Last week, we talked a lot about the Nickel Plate Trail extension. We talked about the Park Street option, make it one way. Good discussion on that. I noted a lot of safety concerns and I, before we start out, I'm planning on putting stop signs on each side of Park Street on Twelfth because I heard a big concern was the speed coming up and down Twelfth Street. Jim, you live close there, I mean, what's, in your opinion, will that help slow things down a lot on Twelfth Street?
We don't want that.
Yeah, um, yeah, I, I would think it would help that, you know, congestion. Regardless, regardless of how we vote, I still think those stop signs ought to go in place.
Yeah, I mean, for that being a, a throughway because it's gonna become more, so if you make that a little late.
And if we do decide to vote that make it Park Street, there'll be a crossing there from the trail that would benefit from the stop sign as well. The other discussion we had would be putting a stop sign on Tenth Street on Park if we made it one way. I would, I would wait on that until we see if we vote on this to make it one way, if that slows the traffic down, if you as citizens feel like traffic is still fast and we need a stop sign and we, you know, we're putting on Tenth Street at some point. Does anybody here have any discussion concerning, we read that ordinance twice. Shortly here, have a motion to read it the third time and vote on that. Does anybody have any comments they want to make concerning that trail extension and turning Park Street into one way so that we can have half of it, which would be the west half, as a walking bike path, east half would be the one way to the north. No, nothing, there'll be rumble strips in the middle, correct? And we've got three USI, our engineers are here to answer any questions that way. Can you raise your hand, Jim?
Yeah, so the one question, at, on Ninth Street, they were talking about a bridge way for the stop in the middle of the road. How are you gonna make that accessible to turn eastern?
We're, we're nixing that.
Okay.
It was, we've had a fire issue, fire chief, future fire chief.
That's the same thing you're thinking. I can't get a truck around that corner.
Yeah, there is no way I could, I could even attempt that. And that was, that was a conversation we had in last meeting about the safety crossing Ninth Street. Here's the thing on that, that trail crossed a lot of county roads, it crosses US twenty-four. If people don't feel safe crossing right there at that point on Ninth Street, they can always go down the light and cross that light, that's their choice, whatever the public will doing. But there's a lot of hazards crossing and the people on the bike path or the walking path need to realize you're at risk whenever you cross a highway or a county road or anything. So, I, but when we talked about the barricade there, we're gonna have to put some major signage here to let people, keep people from turning south on Park Street, obviously. But, you know, as I've talked to you, you know, you're gonna have, you are gonna have a special exception with your equipment. A stop sign there in the middle of Twelfth and Park would be gone. We did talk about maybe a barricade, just enough inside where you can get your semis around the corner but keep people from turning off of Twelfth onto the bike path part. They would have to go kind of around the little barricade to get to the actual street side of it, but we would place that in a way that you wouldn't have any problem with your longer equipment to get around that corner.
So, would I get a written exception?
Whatever you, whatever you like, yeah, it'd be, it'd be, I mean, and if you got into a situation where, hey, I'm gonna be doing this once a week instead of once every couple of months, just let us know so we're aware of it. But that would be something you can put in your carrier with you or whatever. And our police department would know.
And that's, yeah, the thing that, you know, you put it in there, I mean, why Schatz is still around? I mean, I, he understands, but if somebody else would come into play, I would like to have something in, some kind of a written format to say, hey...
Statement for seeing you or candidate.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, he would have something.
Trent, I'm on the floor yesterday's session, and one of the things that he had suggested bring up, which I don't know who would be responsible for this, and it's actually a great suggestion. There is a, there was a concern, I think, from a couple of residents that they would be unable to get out of their homes easily. There's an alley right there, I did drive that to confirm indeed that that was a thing. So, I don't know if that's under consideration.
He called, he called me on that too. There is an alley just on the south side of Mark McColl's that goes east and index of the alley that ends up moving by the Altamont Felt Pavilion and all. I mean, that's an option that we could, it's not been maintained, it could be maintained to shorten your route back to the south. But you're, I looked at, you're only really shortening your route by a couple hundred feet wherever with Mark McColl's property is to go on up to Tenth Street, that's the same thing. So, I'm not sure that's a huge advantage.
And I think it was more for other, other residents that were over there. If I understood correctly...
I mean, if it's something that's needed, we can do that, it may not be paved, it may be more of a...
Yeah, it's gorgeous, the more the people that live there, so I don't actually live with that residence. I'm just in and out with the trucks and...
You know which alley I'm talking about?
Yeah, yeah, and then, and there again, you're, you're talking about another hundred fifty feet, yeah, so it's not...
But if, you know, if residents really wanted, we could put millions out there, we could maintain it. It's only, I think I measured it off, G I S of like three hundred and forty feet. It wouldn't be a big deal to put some millions there and make that accessible to them if they chose to, so... Any other thoughts or comments? I don't, Dan, do you have anything you want to say as far as the trail extension, the importance of it in your mind?
Yeah, I'm Dan McCarthy and I'm on the board of the Nickel Plate Trail. And the Nickel Plate Trail is, it's a forty-one mile trail that goes from Rochester to Kokomo and is part of the Great American Rail Trail, which is a trail that goes across the United States. It's about fifty-five percent complete now and it goes from Washington State to Washington DC and it uses the Nickel Plate Trail. So, it, we're really, really in favor of that extension. One of the reasons why is because when I meet up with long distance cyclists at the gazebo, they're at Mitchell, they'll say, hey, don't you guys have a really good ice cream shop or a good hamburger joint or a brewery in town? And I'll say, yeah, yeah, let's see, I'll give you directions on how to get there. Whereas now, if we had our trail extension, we would be bringing these long distance cyclists right into Rochester, giving them those amenities and I think it would be really good. And, yeah, we're only fifty-five percent done right now, but I think that this trail is, is gonna be going forward as the years progress and we're already designated as part of that trail. Also, for the residents of Rochester, the trail starts at Mitchell, which is just outside the city limits of Rochester. So, if you think of it as a linear park or a greenway, this is our chance to give access to all those people who live in Rochester, a piece of that trail and they can get to it easily. When they extended the trail from Wabash to Mitchell, I just started seeing a whole lot more people using the trail from Rochester. But they're still at the point now where they gotta go park down by the gazebo to get access to the trail. And now, we would be bringing our long distance cyclists, we'd have our Rochester residents all getting into Rochester, using the Rochester pathway, getting over to the Dairy Queen. There's even a public restroom over there and we can direct our riders too. So, I think we would bring a lot more people into the trail and we're thrilled to see Rochester finally getting the momentum to get this done.
Dan, do you know how wide the bike path would be on Park Street itself? The reason I had...
I've had a couple of questions. Okay, if Park Street was a one-way street, would you allow two-way bike traffic?
Yeah, it'll be ten foot wide for two-way right now.
It is one-way for the vehicles, for motorized vehicles.
So, how wide is Park Street?
It is twenty feet.
It is 20 feet. Oh, sorry, 22 feet. 10 foot length, a, the shoulder forty feet, it's a 10-foot trail. Any other public comment on that?
Just to add to what Dan said, the Nickel Plate Trail is, these parts are from Pickle Woods here. It's part of the American Discovery Trail, which goes east to west. Most people take the southern route, so it's, it's supposed to be, let's change. You change the route if you want to go through Rochester and all that, or it would all be more than something else.
There's several people that come through Rochester. I talked to a couple from Iowa last year. And one of the things about these trails and the bikers are the locations that they can stop. And they really love being able to stop in Rochester because they don't have to go out of their way. They said that the next day, when they get to Ohio, they would have to go 30 miles out of their way to find a decent place to eat. So, they really appreciated the fact that they not only have one restaurant to choose from, but several in this town, that they knew they can get the type of nourishment that people on a trail needs regularly. Because fast food places are not healthy for them, and they can't do their ride the way they want. And they do go out of their way to find the type of food so that they can go the next day their 50 or 60 miles that they need to go. And that was really interesting, because I didn't realize that. And it was like, wow, you know, this is, they really put a lot of work into going across country. Now, these are retired people, you know, some of them are young, but most of them are retired people. They're arge, and they're out there, they're riding their bikes, and this is their last experience of a big push, you know? And it's really kind of cool.
What does Park Street have to do, because we already got the trail well towed?
They can't get from 18th to Park. There's also people that live over there by the Columbia School. In order to take their children, because they just told me that, their children to get onto the trail, that part of 18th Street around those curves is very dangerous when you have somebody that's in kindergarten or first grade that's on their bike to get to the trail.
Not near as dangerous, dude.
As just crossing, crossing the street.
Well, not, not.
Where otherwise you're there, I mean, think of coming from Columbia School. And you're now at that spot where you're around the corner and people don't see you, but you don't want to get your kid to that, to that trail. I'm just saying, somebody did say, so glad that that trail's going to be extended, so now I don't have to do that. And neither does anybody else after us have to. And how many people don't take that trail? Because, you know, I've got three kids and I can't watch them in that 35 feet.
But I'm here to tell you that there is going to be a serious accident when they're crossing 9th Street.
Well, and there again, there's a lot of, I mean, south of town, I come up into town 350.
If you sit there and you go to get out of Park Street, you will notice what we're talking about. That is a suicide mission. I just, just so everybody's aware of it, because that is a nasty curve.
And I don't know, if we're there fair of a sign that we can put there for, right at 9th Street, and said, you know, something about the light option?
I guarantee you, there's signs that we get every time we pull out of there. It's not, everybody's got them.
Yes, well.
Ruth, did you say that they was going to extend that trail over on Nelson's property, to go over to the trail? Is that still on the works or is that just?
No, between the property, between there where Nelson's is and the hair salon, beauty salon.
Right.
The beauty salon gave the right to the, to the trail go through.
So is that in this proposal? I mean, is this, this is already?
Well, that's not what we're talking, we're talking strictly about the 12th, the 9th, the Park Street one way.
But what?
The plan is to cross there and go between those buildings, and then go across and connect to the golf course. Anything else? Okay, like I said, we read two ordinances last week. We need a motion to read it the third time by, in its entirety, I would suggest, we can do what you wish.
My motion to bring the ordinance by in its entirety.
All right, ordinance number 12-2024, no ordinance to amend the traffic schedule. Whereas the common council of City of Rochester determined certain portions of the city's ordinances involving one west street should be amended to promote public safety. Now therefore be ordained by the common council of City of Rochester pursuant to its authority under Indiana Code 9-21-1-3. Says I can say something for the chapter 75, schedule four of the code, the ordinances for the City of Rochester is hereby amended as follows. Park Street from 12th Street to 9th Street shall be limited to northbound traffic only.
Park Street to 9th Street. How's Rochester is being targeted?
I'm seconded.
Must have worked one way.
Any more discussion? If not, that's a fine. All opposed? Pass 70-0? Very good. I know you guys are busy, we'll pause for a moment while you leave. We've got to be interviewing the guy that's through this economic revitalization area, Westside, he involved Daniel Hubbard, which is like, I believe, Crestline Development, also Keller Development.
I would suggest you start by letting me describe the project in general.
Mike, are you here to represent Dr. Hall and any way on this? Okay, so he's not present. Crestline's not, are you, was Crestline, I'm sorry, sir? You have to do yourself, please.
I'm James Wilson.
Okay, James, nice to have you with us. Do you want to describe your project?
Sure. So my name is James Wilson. I am representing Dan Hubbard and Crestline Development. And we proposed a 44-unit apartment complex utilizing IH-CDA funding, Indiana Housing Community Development funding. For those of you who are familiar or not familiar with that program, historically, it has not been competitive for small towns to seek those fundings. This is a one-year situation where they have purposely designated funding into small towns, and we are competing for that funding. So we have asked the city to grant us this revitalization area, because it goes through the scoring that IH-CDA uses to allocate their funding. So that's why we've come before you. This represents about a $12 million investment here in Rochester, and would serve, as I said, 44 seniors or families with affordable housing.
Any questions for James?
Did you say with seniors or families?
Yes.
Or affordable housing?
I'm sorry.
Say seniors or family or affordable?
It's all, every aspect of the property would have an affordable component, that's part of the trade-off to get the funding. But the property is open to seniors or families.
And I want to educate the public on this affordable verbiage.
Sure.
I heard nothing for a year of campaigning, except we need housing that we can afford. That's what this is, okay? It's not a negative connotation that we have to hit with affordable housing. It's an income-based workforce housing based on our AMI.
Correct.
And it's, if I remember right, there's levels to it, but you have to qualify by making a certain amount of income.
You have to qualify, and everybody has to pay their rent, and, you know, it's not a free ride.
It's owned by and managed by the developer.
Correct.
This is the, if you want rents under $1,000, that's the only way you're going to get that, period. I mean, you're talking anywhere from $500,000 to $900,000 a month rent. You go do construction, you go market rate on apartments, you do his exact thing under market rate, 16, 1800 bucks or more?
Correct. The units themselves cost $200,000 a piece.
Per unit.
And, yeah, and so without this, without getting the state money and without getting the local help to get the state money, you simply would have to charge that. There's no other way to make that an offer.
So we, first of all, we need to lose what we've many times thought what affordable housing is and what it could bring into our community as far as negative aspects. It is a positive aspect that we need in our community based on our population and their needs. So, it's very well controlled, these developers, they have, they have very rigid compliance in place. Correct me, James, if I'm out of line.
No, you're absolutely correct, thank you.
Because I want, we've got four developers looking for similar things, and I don't know if you're aware of that, James, but you've got some competition out there.
Which is good, right? Because you'll get the best product.
And they're probably going to, I'm guessing there may be probably just one of these developers who are going to get this award. So we're going to have 40 to 50 units that are going to maybe qualify or get, score high enough to get an award from the state to have a complex that's, well, in a price range that people can afford. Outside chance you might get two, not likely. But like you said, this is, this may be a one-year and done deal.
It is a one, yeah, so the statement is a one-year plan.
I'm still hoping, James, that we're going to get better than that. I talked to Mike Bronstein last week, and they, they said they think he's going to be friendly to the smaller communities, because he came out of a small community. So they feel like he's going to be friendly to people like us. So, we're hoping that we have this multiple years going for it as an option. So, but that's where we're at, this is not our decision to, whether to grant this area an economic revitalization area.
Correct. Yeah, ultimately, the state decides how they spend their, you know, how they spend this funding.
And I'm not, I'm just asking questions, because this, I don't know that I've heard this one before. I'm trying to keep track of all of them, Keller, I've seen about her, Keller, whatever, I've seen them a million times, but. Where is this specifically proposed housing, and what is the developer's name?
It's on Road Street.
It's behind CBS.
Oh, it's, this is the one behind CBS, then, okay.
And the project is called Chamberlain Place.
Yeah, I did see that, I just had not heard that terminology before, so it is behind CBS. And then the developer that will be developing and managing that is, what's the name?
So the management company is Crestline.
Crestline.
C-R-E-S-T-L-I-N-E.
Okay.
And the developer is, is Crestline and Hubbard, so it's called CNH.
So they are the same company, they just have, okay, a difference, okay.
And we've, I use the term vetted, we've actually vetted you guys. We've vetted all the developers that have been coming to us, and we have the four developers that we're really looking at strongly right now, or looking at us, I guess, strongly. They rate very high in other communities, got a good product, good team, good management. So, we feel like we are blessed by having the developer we have coming to us and seeking the project, so.
And Dan sends his apologies, he had a family commitment, so that's why I'm standing.
So this is behind CBS?
There's a woods behind CBS that they're looking at, and they would carve out of that woods, if I understand right, carve out of that woods an area. It would still be kind of, if I remember right, the site plan showed kind of trees surrounding the complex, but it would be kind of placed in the middle of that woods, this apartment complex. So it's, there is a street back there, I don't think it very often, but it's called Road Street, right behind CBS, that little property. How many, what's it, like two and a half or two points?
Just over two and a half acres.
Yeah, okay.
I think it's very well needed here, really, and it's a, it's a good thing for the community, as long as you make sure the developer and the management is here along the, through the.
And that's why we've checked with other communities, other municipalities, other mayors, to take down projects, and we've got very, very high marks with these, all of them.
It's really a great project.
That's the way we feel too, and I think Mike Gladback there, he's been very involved with Fedco and all these, and he and I are totally in agreement on this as well. Mike, do you have anything you want to add on that?
No, I think you handled everything. I think the real issue you addressed with affordable, it's not Section 8. It's affordable housing, which means that I can spend 30% of my income on a place that I can afford to live and keep up, and the rest of it, I can live as a human being. Nobody's got to subsidize me, nobody's got to help me. That's the type of housing that we're bringing in. And this is just the first of four developers that we're dealing with. So, I just want to make sure people understand, affordable does not necessarily mean Section 8.
Andy, do we need to make an individual motion, or can we, we've got Keller represented here, or can we make one motion to do both at the same time?
No, you should make individual motions.
Okay, all right, any other discussion on that?
If you're looking at the packet, this Chamberlain Place, somehow the tax abatement information for college got stuck on the back of it, so it's in the wrong packet. I apologize.
And Andy, remind me, what this, this was from the last meeting, this ordinance has to be done.
Is it resolution?
Resolution, okay.
So, as, as part of a request for a tax abatement, it's a two-step process.
Okay.
Really a three-step process. Step one is this.
Okay.
And then presumably at the next meeting, you will have a public hearing, a couple of treasurer publishers, who will have a hearing. And then after that hearing, you will vote whether to pass the confirmatory resolution. It's a declaratory resolution, then hearing, then confirmatory, usually it's done right at the close of the hearing. And with both those things, the, then sending that to the auditor, and so with, with those things, that's what makes the abatement process stick.
And then the actual determination of.
Correct, so you could pass, this resolution is really just agreeing to start the process. In theory, you can have a hearing and then decide you're not going to confirm it, and no abatement occurs. But the declaratory resolution's the first step.
Okay.
So, I think we need a motion to accept this declaratory resolution. Am I using the right verb is there?
I have a question about the resolution. The, on the first page, down at the bottom, the last paragraph, it says not therefore be it resolved. Should that not be now, therefore be it resolved?
Ah, goodbye.
Mine says now.
I see what he's saying, it says not on mine.
Mine says not.
Well, that's interesting.
Mine says now.
Mine says now.
Mine says not.
Marty, you should sign one that says now.
He's signing mine anyway, as you all know, so my mind does say now, thank you.
We need a resolution number, we don't have a resolution number.
I know, I, um, is it up to 14? 14-204.
Chamberlain?
2024, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
But this isn't it, is this the right one? It's just this territory?
So, Amy made a motion to approve this declaratory resolution. We need a second or get somebody a second? Hart seconded, did you get that, Beth?
Yes.
Okay, so, all in favor, raise your right hand. It's approved. Oh, that's on resolution 14-204.
2024.
2024.
That's the Chamberlain, yeah. 14-204.
2024.
2024.
It's 2024.
Sorry. Okay, anything else on that? I shouldn't be, I don't think so. Now, we have another developer seeking a very similar thing with Keller Developer. Again, we have spent a lot of time, Mike and I and others, have spent a lot of time with Keller. They're out of Fort Wayne, and another great company, great management group. Dylan, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, I hate having my back to anyone, so I'm going to go over this. I had some slides, but I think I'm just going to forego those, because we've done a pretty good job of explaining it already, what this is. And those can be gone over at the public hearing if you prefer. But basically, what Keller is proposing are 35 units of senior housing, so 55 and older, also affordable, also through the program that was described by the state for affordable housing. So this particular property is at 1329 College Avenue, and we are requesting also the same, that it be declared an economic revitalization area for the purpose of us being able to request tax abatement, for all the same reasons we just talked about. For all the same reasons we just talked about. Highly competitive program. You are, you are correct. Typically not more than one project gets awarded. I'd like to think there's a possibility for two, but I'm not gonna ever promise that. There could be none, quite frankly, because there are other developments throughout the state that are also competing for these funds. So I guess I would just reiterate how important it is that we see some type of local governmental participation in the way of like a tax abatement in order to help our applications score better than others that are even, even being built throughout the state. So it is a way for you to participate without coming directly out of your pocket. We've talked about that a little bit. Like the site that we're talking about currently is vacant. It has a shut on it. But other than that, you're gonna continue to receive the same tax dollars on the land. The abatement would just be for the improvements.
So explain that, I explained it to all the council last week. It's not really on the investment. We're not abating the, the investment, but the income. On this program, it's just the income. So we're looking at, if I, on your particular project, we're looking roughly around three hundred thousand over ten year. Your ask was like a ten year, a hundred percent abatement. And to put that in real number, that's about three hundred thousand over ten years. And that three hundred thousand can be applied towards our ten percent participation, correct?
Yes.
So versus a market rate investment of say, like yours, what, seven and a half million?
Yeah.
Say seven and a half million, if we were going to give a ten year, a hundred percent on seven and a half million, now you're talking to between, no over two million dollars that we've kind of given away. So that's where, and I've tried to work with these developers, whoever doesn't give up the award, I'd still love to have a project by them to, you know, working here. And, but the whole abatement plan will be different. It'll look quite a bit different because we're not gonna give our money away. So.
No, absolutely not.
But we know where we are from a cash standpoint. And to be able to put three hundred thousand toward that ten percent match is, is huge for us right now to be able to get a project rolling. So that's a later discussion, but, you know, do you have any, or you wanna say a concern? So we're doing the same thing.
Yeah, I gave, the gentleman, Ray Gray, he presented yesterday at the A-8 Land. It was a robust conversation, but he did an excellent job. What I liked the most was that there was discussion related to the fact that it was geared towards seniors and that the funding that you would have to receive, it was a forty-year guarantee that they could not actually change of the residence. And so for forty years, well, it's probably.
Changing the ownership of it, right?
Well, the ownership can actually change. I don't want you to be misled by that. The ownership can change. But you, you file a restriction on the property for affordability of that.
Oh, I see. Oh, I got it. Okay, yeah.
For forty years. So it has to be really good to see.
And I think the people about their projects would be right. The back, out their back door would be the trail extension, which, you know, plays well for elderly. I say elderly. Fifty-five and older, I'm not there yet. The wise group of people that we have right now. All right. So we need a motion to approve this declaratory.
What's the resolution?
Resolution.
Fifteen dash two oh two four.
Okay.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, let me get my papers here. Sorry.
Yeah, that's right.
So Marty, Marty, you moved it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Who's second?
Bob seconded.
Bob, okay, thanks.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. All opposed, any? Okay. All right, we're good. Doctor Hoff, can we do the same with him, even though he's not president? He may just, or are we prepared for that yet?
Well, my, my only problem with my packet is there's a reference to an exhibit A, and I don't see an exhibit A.
On this one? On the college one?
Hoff.
Hoff, no, I mean, yeah, I don't, we don't have, we didn't get, we didn't get the detail.
Well, the resolution's not complete without an exhibit A, so I can't.
So we can't hang on that?
Can't recommend it.
Okay. All right. Next item is the stormwater B E discussion. I'm having a meeting tomorrow with somebody who can guide me a little bit further down that road. I'm, I'm kicking it on down the road a little bit. I, I've got some questions. Honestly, it comes down to, I'm looking at a possible utility voucher for our population that just cannot handle a more financial load. I'm working with a couple organizations to, with their database to try and pinpoint who that population is. This is just a thought I've had. I'm not sure it's gonna work out. I'm not sure logistically we can even do it. But before I just put out a flat stormwater rate suggestion, I'd, I'd like to look at that, the other side of it. You know, the lake people that aren't using any stormwater drainage, all of it goes to the lake. You know, they're gonna question, why are we getting hit up for a rate when we're not using any of the infrastructure? You started exhuming those two groups. Now you're putting a lot of the burden on the businesses. So I'm just not comfortable right yet. So let me have a little more time. And I meet with Joe Tomber tomorrow for about three hours. And he comes from the lake community. Obviously has a percent of his populations like ours that just can't handle any more lift. So I want to pick his brain a little bit before we talk about it any further. You guys are okay with that?
Yep.
All right, Amy, Duane's not here. You wanna talk briefly about the sidewalk committee board?
Yeah. I have the exhibit A on the Chamberlain one that we just did. I don't have it on Hoff's.
Right, right.
Yeah, that's on Hoff's.
Okay, that's where we can move on today. Okay. We good?
Um, so as a point of reference, we had a resident who had come to Trent regarding the sidewalk committee that used to be in existence. Trying to ask me to speak to this resident. And I found out upon further investigation, having spoken to Duane, that former mayor, Mayor Thompson, was a part of that whole process as well. And so I sat down with Phil, who's here, as well as Mayor Thompson, to discuss the concept of the sidewalk committee. Why was it important? Why was it taken away? All of those pieces. After obtaining all the information, I circle back around with Duane and Phil. Phil, raise your hand, wave it at everybody. And we discussed with Duane what his thoughts were related to that. He was very much in favor because he does not have enough people on his, his team, his staff, to be able to do things like take an inventory of the sidewalks. And so Phil has graciously already worked with Duane to get an inventory, a detailed inventory of sidewalks, including ADA, so that eventually at some point, that would be helpful for Duane to put into his database for future reference. So the discussion between Duane and Trent, I believe, and Randy was that we would look at the current ordinance. Did you find that best? So because we, there was discussion whether there wasn't an ordinance or there was already related to the sidewalk.
Seventy-five, yeah. Seventy point five.
Okay.
But I didn't have a copy of it, sorry.
Yeah, so we are needing to review the current ordinance as it stands. There was discussion about potentially quitting the sidewalk committee. Together with the tree board, there was some hesitancy related to that discussion from a tree board member. So what we discussed was after we get that of the ordinance that, that found, and Andy found, that myself, Phil, Duane, and Randy would sit down and discuss it further and come back to the city council with a recommendation or more discussion points. But we just wanted to bring it as a point of reference so that the city council understood that this was something that was happening.
We've had a hard time getting tree board members. We have, we had a few from outside the county wanting to serve. They can't. I mean, outside the city. They can't because we're outside the city, serve on it. So right now, we're down to two on the tree board. There's a lot of combination work between the tree board and the sidewalk committee or sidewalk issues. So it was an idea to bring some people in from the sidewalk committee into the tree board and to some sort of combination type of work, which I think is a step in efficiency. But we'll find out more as we get, you know, excellent.
Phil, did you have anything that you'd like to say?
I have, um, this started in April thirtieth was the first meeting. In the meantime, I have taken Rochester in five different sections. Section one is Race Street to Main Street, north, and everything east. Second section is from Ninth Street, Main Street, everything west to thirty-one. Section three is Ninth Street to Main Street, everything south to the, including the high school, scroll view, Lake Shore, I looked Lakeview Bend. Section four is Ninth Street, Main Street, everything east to the railroad tracks. And section five will be Manotl Heights. And in Manotl Heights, it will go from Wobash to the railroad tracks. So it'd be Park Street. I have taken section one. Section one is completed. I got pictures of all the sidewalks that need to be placed. I have a sales spreadsheet at each intersection. There's supposed to be at least eight sidewalks, areas to cross. I have counted each section of how many is ADA already done, what's not done. Or if there's not a sidewalk, there are some places where sidewalks don't go all the way to the street. So it may only be one section, one intersection, we only have six sidewalks. So that's what I'm doing with the Excel, and then I'll give that to Duane for him to do. So every street, every sidewalk should be done by the end of July. But the city of Rochester will have a complete inventory. And then it's up to you guys to decide what, what needs to be fixed. And, and according to, I'm just throwing a number out. If you were able to get a grant for a million dollars, you could use it real quick.
Yeah, well, you know, we got that federal grant to do the major work. We did this spring and that took five years.
Right.
Federal grants, I mean, everything. We, we have discussed to a fifty-fifty, you know, where the city picks up up to a fifty thousand dollar limit each year. Homeowner covers fifty, we cover fifty. That's, that's something we can do pretty quick. We can get some repairs done pretty quick until we run out of money for that year. So we're looking at that pretty seriously because we can get action quick, bring the federal government in, everything closed down.
When I was on the committee in ninety-six, through the two terms with Mayor Thompson, we only had twenty thousand dollars every year to spend on the, on the fifty-fifty. So.
I mean, icing on top of the cake then.
Yeah. So this is.
This is better. I mean, the, the federal thing is free, but it'll be twenty thirty before everything's done, you know?
Ruth and I have talked about the, the Park Street. And then we talked about, there's not a sidewalk from Eighteenth Street all the way out to thirty-one. And we have a lot of kids that go out there to work for fast food and everything.
That is something I'd like to get focused on because we talked about the walkability of our town and that, that's, yeah.
And we talked about there, instead of a sidewalk, there, we could make it like a trail. I don't know if it's feasible, which, which is different from pricing and things like that. But I am thoroughly enjoying working with the city. And this is the first time since I've been here in forty years, that this is the first council that I've seen that really cares about the Rochester community. If we wanna move forward, it's always been, this is a retirement community. I've seen, just in the, in the six months with this new administration, it's going, it's living good. And I appreciate every one of you for doing it for the city of Rochester.
Thanks, Phil. Thanks for all your work already.
And one last, one last thesis that the hope is that the sidewalk committee would be that community liaison between Randy and Duane and Citizen to be able to discuss, to, to talk through what those pieces would look like and to be the carrier of information. So we'll report back with all the things once we figure it out. But thanks, Phil.
Sounds good. All right. We don't have anybody here to discuss the pilot plan, do we? I know we had one developer interested in the, in the payment lieu of taxes, but they're not present, so we don't need to discuss anything there tonight. I need to get better verb to what that is. I've had one developer, in fact, I think Keller, I was talking to her before the meeting, she says, I don't really, I asked her the question about what's the difference. She said, well, there is a difference, but there really isn't any advantage. So she was kind of puzzled why the payment lieu of taxes was even mentioned. But we'll find out more later if necessary. All right. It's all old business unless anybody's got anything else, then we'll go to new business. Hey, Virja, sorry, I got you here forty-five minutes earlier than necessary.
You're fine.
Virja Spence from Hope.
I don't know how familiar any of you are with the program that we started with local county home, probably four years ago, which we called Hope for the Homeless. And I've been running that program since. I have just put my four-hundredth person under roof. We, when I say Hope for the Homeless, most people are thinking of someone that's on the street. And that's not necessarily always the case. Today, I'm working with a lady that was sent to Fulton County to relocate because of domestic abuse. She is not safe in the county that she's in by Catholic charities. And they had heard from us. So they had asked for help with her deposit because no other organization in Fulton County provides a deposit or first month's rent. Some of them, within the last little bit, have helped a little bit with the rent because I was out of funds. But they will not help with the deposit. It's not in their charter. And that's what we have done, is deposit and first month's rent. When we set up the requirements for this program, I said, I will not put anyone in that does not have a job or some means of support. Because to me, it's setting them up for failure. The next month, if you can't pay the rent, you're looking at someone in filing eviction. And then you're back with an eviction on your record and you're getting into a horrible cycle. Some of the people that I put into housing have been living at the Rochester motel. They're working. But when you're paying two hundred and forty dollars a week, that's nine hundred and sixty dollars just in a four-week month. You've got five weeks gone there, you add another two forty. And it is way more than what, in a lot of cases, they're struggling to eat because they don't have enough money. And like today, when I'm working with this lady, she has three children. They're all now having to get counseling and things because they're not in a safe environment. And Catholic charities weren't to know if we could please pay a deposit for them so that they could. I'm out of funds. My husband and I paid it. Like I said, you know, we've gotten about four hundred people under roofs. The county commissioners have been very supportive of the program. I've gotten at least ten thousand dollars a year from them. And I also got some American Rescue funds. The city informed me that we didn't have any homeless in Fulton County several years back. And I can see your eyebrows hanging up. And they gave us five thousand dollars and I have never gotten anything else from, from this, from the city. I'm finding the same thing that you are. We've got a council now that seems to care about Fulton County. And I don't want to set an amount, but any amount that some, you know, if you could help, would be a blessing to a lot of people. The rents in Fulton County, we definitely need affordable housing here. One room at North Gate upstairs is seven hundred and fifty dollars a month. Less than a deposit, you're looking at fifteen hundred dollars to, just to get somebody in. And people that are struggling and that have children, or even when they don't have children, that's way more than thirty percent. You know, seven hundred and fifty is way more than thirty percent of their income. And so they're having to get a lot more, use a lot more of the programs to get assistance in other areas, you know? They, if they have a really cold month or whatever, you, you don't have money, then to pay your electric bill and, or your heat bill and that. So has it been a hundred percent successful with the people? No. No. I'm not going to tell you that every one of them works out. I can tell you that we now have two families that have managed to buy homes on contracts. And doing well, keeping up with their payments. And just the pride that you can see in, in, when you talk to them, you know? Because a lot of them still keep in contact with me. And part of that is because, you know, our church now has gathered furniture and clothing and things like that. So when I put someone off of the street into a place, I generally can provide furniture, dishes, pots and pans, clothing, bedding, towels, anything that they need for that house. So my husband and I delivered furniture last night at ten o'clock. So I would appreciate any assistance that the city could give us.
And that's a point of reference, just so the check's not paid out to the wrong place. So Fulton County Hope transitioned to help to create a housing.
Yes.
Organization that specifically identifies supporting affordable housing needs. And it's called Lighted Pathways. So Mary Kay always tells me to be clear in all things.
Yes.
She reminds me always. So this is in honor of Mary Kay who tells me that constantly. I knew she would hit me up later, ask me a question. So Hope was gracious and grateful to be able to research this subject of housing ad nauseam and then help to foster the creation of this Lighted Pathways, which Virja is an angel and serves on the Board of Hope as well as Lighted Pathways. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear. So if we indeed do give money, that it would be paid out to the wrong ones.
Right. And thank you.
Thank you, Mary Kay, for always reminding me.
Thank you, Amy. I was going to remember to tell you that, but I didn't.
I saw her, so.
Yeah. You probably have known Fulton County Housing Authority, Inc. Most people think of that as being a government agency. It's not, it's a not-for-profit. So I said, who is going to donate anything to Fulton County Housing Authority? Because they think that it's a government agency. And it's not. So they renamed it to Lighted Pathway. So.
And the reason for that too is that Lighted Pathways has more access to be able to receive other grants that Fulton County Hope would not in the housing realm. So this is assistance.
Right, we've applied for grants to hopefully get more housing in Fulton County. And I can see that the city are also working with others to get housing in because there's not enough to go around.
All right, well.
Anyone have any questions?
There are not enough wonderful adjectives to describe yours and Dave's work and efforts in their community the last few years.
Thank you.
There's lots that's come out of their personal pockets to help others and they're angels.
I just have to say one thing. You don't know what it feels like to have a five-year-old run across the room and grab you around the legs and say, you found us a home. Thanks for, I'll go back to celebrate your show.
Okay. So I think going forward, we need to look, I, I personally would like for the council to look at putting a budget item in for next year to help them. And if we, if we feel like we can do something now that's on you guys, we can make a motion to whatever. I mean, we can figure it out. But certainly in next year's budget line, I think we need to, I would like to see us include Lighted Pathway. Is that the way it would fall under, right? As a, a place where we invest into our community, into our, not just homeless, but less fortunate people need, need a boost in life.
I also have elderly people, you know, that I have gotten out of abusive situations. You know, they come in and their arms are black and blue where they've been shaken by their kids and stuff like that. And they need a safe place to go. So it works for all ages. Thank you very much.
Thanks Virja. Any discussion, any thoughts, anything to say about that?
What's on your thinking as a budget line item and wherever we take it?
I don't know about doing it next year.
I think that currently a lot of the, like, compassion health cares and the Fulton County Agency and everything comes out of the council budget. So, I mean, we just add another line item to that for this year.
We can, yeah, we can discuss next year, you know, do we want to discuss anything immediate as far as financial help? They could certainly use it, so that's, you guys call.
I don't.
Yeah.
I certainly stand to ask you to do something immediately if we could.
You matter.
Money sometimes, it sounds very fun.
What'd you say, Beth? Oh, he, he's in favor of doing something immediately. He said if we didn't come to the table, he'd pony up.
I love that.
That's amazing.
Double, double the money? Actually, I do have to admit, they have been helpful before. Smith, Story, and Spence, their partner actually did donate at one point to Hope for the Homeless when it was under Hope. So Mark did actually pony up.
Does anybody have a, a year they want to look at?
Take out your materials.
Yeah. Do you have a fear?
Amy, would you have a suggestion?
I mean, I don't feel that I can speak on that because, well, I'm a colleague. She's only a colleague.
I'm going to suggest, five thousand, but you have to be a lot more aggressive next year. More aggressive, I'm going to say five thousand immediately than more aggressive next year. It's my.
Yeah. Five thousand might be almost an insult.
Well, I mean, if you want to go more.
I mean, that's what the city gave before. I mean, I, I feel like I could be fair in saying that is that the city has given, when it was under Hope, they do, that was the number that the city gave previously.
And the costs are higher, so I mean, if you want to go more, that's one I would suggest.
The council's been in ten, or county is, I mean.
County's given how much?
Ten.
County's given ten, so.
What do we, I don't know, what do we have?
Can we get ten somewhere?
Yeah, I'll find somewhere.
We can do ten. Okay, we're going to motion to do ten thousand to Lighted Pathway. Need a second? Bruce seconded.
Where, where, where we going to pull that from?
Council?
Ready, Dave, um, your pocket.
Yeah, we could be ready, Dave, um, we could be ready, Dave, um, so. I'll, I'll find somewhere.
Let us know.
I will.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I love standing.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, great, I know she's got two minutes, I appreciate that. All right, Fulton County, you going to speak on that behalf?
So every year, the animal adoption agency, Animal Shelter, Shores, receives money from the city of Rochester. And so Beth asks to be able to receive that money that Janet would put in the request in a written form. I believe the amount that we have traditionally given them was the fifty thousand dollars. And so she, as far as I know, she followed up?
She did, and we play it, pay it twice a year. So we do twenty-five thousand and then twenty-five thousand.
Okay, so she's just putting in the request for what has been done before.
For next, for next year's budget. Because this year would already have been approved.
Right, she's just asking to get the money right now, but.
I know you had a question related to that, remember, about keeping the money current? Did you figure that one out?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're, we're current on them.
Asking for next year's money now, or just?
I think she just wanted the release of it. You guys have already approved it.
Yeah, I mean, it's in, it's in the budget.
Right.
So this, this year's budget approved, so.
Right, we just want to let you know it's going out.
Has she had the money for this year, said?
It is for this year.
Okay, so she's just asking for the release of the funds that she's already been approved.
We don't need a motion to that.
It's starting to approve.
That's automatic, yep. Okay.
Question.
Okay.
Well, that pre-introduction from Amy, I would tell you that I'm a numbers girl. Just to give you a little bit of a synopsis of the best kept secret in Fulton County. We provide free healthcare for the uninsured in Fulton County. And one might say, well, everybody has health insurance, so why are we needed? I can tell you that fifty percent of our patients right now fall in that sweet spot that they make just enough to not qualify for Medicaid and yet are not wealthy enough to afford healthcare insurance. And if you wake up one day with no health insurance and you have a catastrophic issue, you're going to go to our ED. This year, so far, twenty-three of our patients have said when they walked in our door, they would have gone to the emergency room if we weren't open. And I can tell you that at a minimum, that is saved accounting at least twenty-three thousand dollars. You know, one admission in through the ER is definitely more than one thousand dollars. So twenty-three patients said we'd have gone right to the ER about you. We provide medical primary, but then through grants, we provide dental. We provide vision, including glasses. And we provide mental health counseling, all free in our clinics. So now the dental and vision, we do through a grant through our local dentist and our, our local eye doctor. So we provide all of that. We say integrated healthcare, primary medicine, but then provide those other services too. We have seen a marked increase in our Hispanic population. We are now almost fifty-fifty with our Hispanic patients who are coming to us. And often we see that children are covered under chip and then dad's working, so he's got something through his workplace. It's mom who has nothing at all. And we have found several women with some fairly significant health issues that have just hesitated to go to an ER setting, you know, that have luckily found us. A story I like to share is that recently, a person who worked at a convenience store got a raise. So they're, you know, in that euphoria of now I'm going to have more money. Well, the raise put them outside of the limits for Medicaid. And so they were hypertensive and diabetic. Now all of a sudden, they have no health insurance and no way to obtain that medication. So luckily, they learned of us, we were able to do that. We provide numerous medicines, including even like the Libre sensors for our diabetics. And we provide a really amazing quality, amount of care for the patients that we treat. You did last year graciously give us fifteen thousand. And I believe we are a line item approved on this year's budget for fifteen thousand. And I would ask that we continue to be a line item on your budget. I think that we talked about third quarter.
Yeah.
Release of those funds.
It was last year's.
Yes. So, you know, just the gratitude, we, we survive on grants and personal donations and, you know, don't get a lot of funding from, you know, county or city. So the fifteen thousand last year and then again this year is greatly appreciated. Currently, at mid-year, we are eighteen thousand in the red. So that has come about mostly because just to keep our county hospital, you know, moving forward, they have had to limit the amount they can write off for us. So we have tried to subsidize some of that. They graciously are still giving our patients a healthy discount, either an eighty percent discount or a hundred percent discount, which is definitely fabulous for our patients. But sometimes that twenty percent that the patient has to pay is still unachievable. You know, kind of like Virja's saying, they're just trying to afford housing and food. Medical's the last thing they're thinking of. We often have the patient come to our door and they have two or three comorbidities and they are really in tough shape. And they want us to cure them overnight, which, you know, wish we could do that. But they've waited because they haven't gone to our ER. They haven't abused it. But then they find themselves so deep in the, the hole with their health that it's, it's pretty tough to get them turned around. But I would tell you, it's an amazing thing that we do. We've been around since two thousand and nine. And again, I say we're the best kept secret because people will say, well, I didn't know about you. I think we have to think in their mindset, again, they're trying to figure out housing, they're trying to figure out how to get from point A to point B if they don't have a car, how do they get gas if they do have a car? So they haven't really thought about their, their healthcare at all. And so they don't care that we're around till they need us. And then all of a sudden, you know, you wake up and you're definitely ill that day. We're pretty important to them that day. But again, thanks for the money that you're funding us with. And we would just ask that we continue to be a line item in your budget.
I have to give props to.
Next year, yeah, I'm sure we're already, we're definitely already doing this year. It'll be just consideration for next year. We don't need any vote tonight, we're just, she just asked us to make sure.
I think we would, I think we would be more than happy to continue on.
How did, qualifies at an income level or?
Yes, we take up to three hundred percent of the federal poverty guideline, which is really generous. So, you know, some people hesitate to come to us, oh, I make too much money. Sixty-six percent of our people are working right now. So, you know, they are making money. They just are not making enough about the cheapest, and you all know that. I mean, a hundred and fifty dollars or so a month is about the cheapest policy you can get. And then you've got a five thousand dollar deductible. That might as well be all the money in the world to them. So they just hesitate to do it. It's cheaper to keep people healthy than to treat them when they're ill. So that's what we're trying to do. And they say, oh, we're, we're fine today. That's great, we want to keep you fine, we want to keep you healthy. And we do everything we can to do that.
Since you said you're an eighteen thousand in the hole, I think we can go ahead and release the fifteen thousand in this quarter before September, so you've.
We'll continue to be in the hole, so I did say that.
I know, but that's kind of, that's kind of making it lessen the hole.
Right, right.
So if you wanted, if you would like to have it this quarter, we can do that.
Really for budgeting, I know that sounds crazy, but our golf outings right now, so.
Okay.
You know, third quarter's usually pretty lean for us. So third quarter's still a great, great for us.
And I wanted to just say, I accidentally got a compliment on Mary Kay today because I had called to do some research on Real Services and a self-sufficiency program that Hope is looking into and talked to Latonya from Real Services. And she basically said that you were a lifesaver for resources for Fulton County because they almost pulled all of Real Services funding from Fulton County. But when she found you and you were such a great partner, we were able to still obtain the funding that we deserved because of Mary Kay. So I did not mean to find that out today, I just had to compliment it as research.
That offsets her.
Don't like me.
We did learn, it was actually many, many years ago, we realized there was funding available for Fulton County that had never been utilized. And so we went after that money and we have gotten a minimum of ten to fifteen thousand dollars every year for our dental. And medical's one issue, dental is a whole other issue. We get more calls every day on dental. Because some people have medical but don't have dental. And you all know dental's not cheap at all. This year, we have twelve thousand to cover all of our patients for the year. But we do a lot of good and our local dentists are fabulous to work with us on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is our annual report, which I'll just give you for reference.
Any other new business?
I would ask, do I, do we need, we need to go ahead and set our budget meeting tonight or we have one more month? We typically didn't, we usually do it in about July?
Yeah, it's, let's do it for July because I just got the, they moved some of the dates back before we can get all the information we need. So they moved it from like the first of June or July to the middle of July. And we're not having our DLGF meetings until July, past July fifteenth. So if we can do it at the July meeting.
July twenty-second?
No, it's not, it's not a regular meeting, it's a special meeting because it's a, it's a lengthy process typically.
Oh, okay.
And that's the one time of year the mayor buys us time.
Okay, so.
Out of the year, twice about a.
Okay, out of the year, so.
But it would be the twenty-second of July.
Yeah, wow.
Not that one.
Yeah.
Well, I hope so.
We have, it's early, it's five o'clock. But, and we usually have a backup meeting too because recently we've gotten it done in one meeting, but sometimes it takes two meetings.
We look for a week in August maybe, or?
I think she said the week of July twenty-second.
Whatever, the, well, I, you know, I guess I'm not familiar with, with you guys are used to, so.
Typically, it's always around July, like, yeah.
Oh, we got a big.
She was saying we should have had some.
Because, yeah, if we can't have the meetings with the DLGF until after July fifteenth, Andy, they changed it.
Sure.
So.
So it's going to have to be at the DLGF meeting?
Yeah.
Regular meeting.
At least this year, I, I, I would, you know, Ryan, you're asking me questions that I, I've never done the budget yet. So, I mean, it's just all brand new to me. So if you guys can, you know, like, just maybe, if it has to be a special meeting, then I need to, you know, do that. But what, are you, you set your whole budget at that time?
We meet with department heads, they propose their budget, we look at it.
Oh, you're doing that meeting?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Oh, I thought you were just meaning, oh, I just thought you were just meaning your budget.
I, I, I think the meeting you're describing contains no official action. It's a public meeting, but essentially a, a work session.
Yes.
Okay. And I, I suspect that anyone that faces DLGF has, they're only concerned about the, the actual vote on the budget.
No, that, what their concerns are is I don't have the numbers.
Okay, well, I mean, you could.
I mean, I don't have the, all the tax information, everything, and all the revenue is. So that's, I mean, I don't have all the tax information, everything, and all the revenue is, so. And, you know, trying to jam all the department heads' stuff into that before we have the meeting with you guys. I mean, usually those meetings, at least from where I'm hearing from the DLGF, and so maybe I'm not following what you guys are saying, is that it's due the first of November, I'm hoping to have it done by the first of October, you know, it has to be published. And then I was thinking we would meet in September with you guys after we had worked with the department heads, but that's not what you've done in the past?
No, I think that's what you say.
Department has presented their budgets to us, and we approve, we, you know, we make changes as we, as we see fit, and we construct the final budget that is proposed to the, at a regular meeting that we vote on and we submit to the state.
So is that enough time?
But you're wanting to do it in July versus it's not due the November first?
I don't have a, that is just when we traditionally have done it, July, because of the deadline set by the state.
So I understand that, you know, but I think that's panning me pretty fast. And I spoke with Judy Robertson, who's our DLGF budget coordinator, and she mentioned that you guys always did it early. She said, but you're not gonna be able to do that this year, so.
So it has to be after you meet with them, then we can, you know, and it's not a regular meeting, it's a definite meeting that.
And that budget I gave you, that, that's what you need to give us.
Right.
So we can do our budgets, turn them in, present them to council, and then at the meetings, every department head will get like fifteen minutes typically, half hour per department head to explain the budget to the council.
And the council would ask questions?
Yeah.
All of that.
Okay, thanks, Brian, I didn't, I didn't know that was a step.
So we can decide a date at our next meeting?
Yeah, I can do it. Put that together next meeting.
That's on the twenty, what'd you say, twenty-third? Twenty-third of our next meeting, July, so we can decide a date on that date for this budget meeting.
Thank you, that was giving some.
Okay, all right, no other new business? We voted already on the ordinance of March three, we voted on the ordinance vacating public drive, shelter. We dismissed the one that's heard, so we're on to department reports. Deputy Fire Chief, soon to be Fire Chief, DeBois.
Thank you. Tom's not coming, but it's his birthday, so he's sixty, he says he's not coming. I'll clear that up there. Total runs for the month is seventy-five, structure fires, three in Richland Township, one in Rochester, one in Henry, one brush fire, two unattended trash fires, Rochester Township and one in the city, I think Andy helped us with that one. Vehicle fires, we had one, actually it wasn't ours, but we still had to respond between Liberty and Allen Township and Macy. Fire alarms, one, gas leaks, three. Medical runs, Rochester thirty-four, Rochester Township eleven, Richland four, Newcastle one. Rescue non-emergency was one, we had a kid stuck in a swing at the park. And then accidents, it happened. Accidents, three in city, five in the township, one in Newcastle, and two in Richland.
The council facilities on Friday?
Oh, yes, and then Friday, one o'clock, we'll start the retirement process of Fire Chief Butler, love penning ceremony for some of the full-time personnel that have not been sworn in yet. As of this morning, he did not realize he was swearing them in.
He did, I told him.
We went round and round about it, but.
He's pushing sixty, he's pushing sixty, so.
He tried to tell me it was your responsibility and.
But I told him, I told him last, I mean, a couple different times, I'd like for him to do it, and I made it clear to him.
You might reiterate, not like him to do it, he will do it.
Well, I basically told him that this morning. I said, as your last act, as your last act, this is something you should do.
Ambulance will change over next Monday.
I, I want to encourage you guys to come out, especially at one o'clock, there's some things that Tom doesn't even know. So if you guys can swing out there at one o'clock.
On Friday?
On Friday, precisely at the time, knowing for the swearing in, but there is something else, so if you can, you can get out there for a little bit. So it's fire station, and then from three to five is kind of the retirement party, but the, so anyway. Any else?
Tom know about the retirement?
He knows about the retirement party, he just doesn't know about everything that's going on earlier at one o'clock, so.
That's what happens, you know, come to city council meeting.
You guys aren't gonna tell me this till after Friday anyway, it will be on.
Yeah, he won't know, he won't know.
All right.
Yeah.
So anyway, if anybody could come out there, it'd be great. Chief shots?
You've got my report, pretty basic, twenty-seven accidents, seventy-six warnings, forty-seven offenses, thirty-six case reports, five hundred and nineteen calls for service, six towed vehicles, and seventeen people incarcerated. We did have police in the park this past Saturday. Great event, not a great turnout, we'll just keep trying, that's all we can do. Might've been, might've been the heat, didn't advertise very well, just, I, I thought it went well, but just kind of a ton of people came out, and then there were only about twenty, twenty or twenty-five people, I think, that showed up for their free movie on Sunday, so we're gonna give it another shot next year and try to make it bigger and better.
Do you have the dates already?
No, no.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
We're gonna jump her down to the committee reports. I think we have anything else besides that, so. Nobody from downtown partnership, like the animal association, Amy getting on the area plan or adoption?
Yep, animal adoption, Mary did that, so that's good. Area plan, we basically just did a zoning amendment to the map from R1 to R2 for Keller, and we'll make the presentation, and we did begin the discussion about solar. So looking at having more detail in the solar ordinance or whatever they call it, I hear they're gonna hit it. So that was a robust conversation, lasted an hour and a half, almost as long as the city council meeting, so it was good.
Michael?
Thank you. I'll shoot through this as quick as I can, I know it's late. What I'm passing out for you is information on the industrial park that we've been working on for so long. We had a, this is a ready-to project that we're going through. And we had a session earlier this week to discuss possible cuts and such. Right now, we're sitting at three million dollars as an ask for the ready-to funds, which means we will have to come up with a match at some point, times three at least, between the city and the county. But that's somewhere in the future at this point. We still have to work through some additional cuts. We have three million dollars that we have to reduce total out of the thirty-five billion that we received. And the way that we did this the other day, Monday, was we moved a lot of projects and programs over into the Lilly project money, the two hundred and fifty million dollars that they're going to release at some point. That money will be released over a period of time, and it's gonna come in drips and drabs. The first thing that you've got is, a couple weeks ago, we were awarded a grant, a ten thousand dollar grant by Duke Energy. And as you see, I've included the schedule on it for you. Some of the project, some of the stuff that they're doing is what's called a desktop review. And if you consider, this is probably a view of the project from like a mile up, where it will tell you what kind of the project it is. I've got, by the way, we kind of, in order to come up with the name, we called it the Rochester South Industrial Park. We have proximity maps, aerial maps, electrical service territories, wetlands, floodplains, soil type maps, things like that that tell us at the end of the day, the site is a good site to locate. We're going to have to do more studies, more detailed studies, that's what some of the ready money's gonna be used on. And we'll have to do topographical boundary maps, all kinds of stuff like that that go much, much deeper. This is a, as it says, a good site. If you want, any one of you can come down anytime you want to the office, and I'll take you through the maps that we have. I just didn't want to print them all up and everything, because there's a lot. There's a new court board in the, in the boardroom there, but I print everything up. We've got all kinds of visuals going, so if you ever want to come down and find out what's going on, let me know, and we'll sit and talk with you. The other side of it, what the, real quick, what these two pages give you is the summary of what the program is. And the bottom line is that it's a, it's an industrial site worth investigating, we're continuing to work on. We're trying to expand it on a continual basis just through the, working with those property owners out there. Honestly, I can, I can't go too deep into it, but I'll tell you, we've already had some interest in a building being put up. And we don't even have an industrial park, which is kind of really nice, you know? I've talked with state people, they're excited about it, and they feel that between the EV plants in Kokomo and the EV plant that's up in New Carlisle, we are in a position where that park's gonna get filled pretty quickly. So that's, that's positive work for us. The last two pages are dealing with the Lilly monies. And if you'll forgive the rough notes that I took during the meeting, typing them all up, one will say light reduction, the other will say arts and culture. The light reduction process, each county, we belong to a six-county regional plan group, and each county was allowed to put in one building. And we had already put in the Potts building for ready-to originally, so that became our contribution to the six buildings. We only asked at that time about thirty-one thousand dollars to help stabilize it, whatnot. If the money does come through, and I know there's a lot of work already being done on Potts, we'll switch to another building at some point, is how we'll handle that. We're working, I've got a small committee that I've put together, and we're gonna work on creating a bigger district. What they want in this whole process is, if you go to the arts and culture page, it will say, tell you that each project must be sustainable. And by that, what they mean is, this is a long-term project, to talk about the other side of it real quick. They don't want murals, they don't want something that you have to completely maintain on an annual basis. They want something that's gonna last twenty-five years and bring people in to Fulton County. They don't want them coming from Cass or Howard or wherever, they want them coming from Illinois, Ohio, the rest of Indiana. So those projects are what we're working on too. I've created a small group of people, cultural, people who are working on, working on some really, really long-term projects. And what we will wind up doing is, we'll be asking for millions of dollars, not hundreds, thousands, or millions of dollars to come in and do both, this is both the blank and the arts and cultural stuff. So right now, that's about where we stand, if you've got any questions. And like I said, if you guys want, anytime, come on over, just call me first, make sure I'm there. Seems like I can sit there, nobody shows up, I believe thirty-five people show up, so that's on that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Art Board?
Yes, they met June tenth, and they did some of the highlights, they had a, that's pretty close, about a two-hour, two-hour meeting, but some of the highlights, they, they're still working on the Lakeside Beach as far as sand and trying to make improvements there. That's ongoing, they had some ideas, good discussion, they're working, they picked their five-year plan. Engineering group, I believe it was here.
Yes.
Decided, gonna help with that. They also are actually doing, actively marketing the parks. They hired Jessica Shaker to do that digital marketing, so that you can replace the page, and various, they're working on the website. So some of the things that they've got going on, hard-working group, a lot of discussion.
Somebody came to me before the meeting to make sure you mentioned the steering committee they're trying to form. They are looking for volunteers to be part of the steering committee for this five-year plan. So if you're listening or watching on TV or any audience that's interested in being a volunteer to help with that, they'd be interested in working with you, so I'm gonna get that out there. I will say the beach is greatly improved from what it has been. We had a group come up in Kokomo Friday, and I was very proud of it. Dwayne went out, his guys went out, and they pressure washed the tables, pressure washed the pavilion area, raked the sand, turned off the water. Couldn't have been more proud of the way it looked, I mean, there wasn't any floating out there, kids had a ball. I still don't have the best base, but we're working on that too. So anyway, a lot of people are putting some time and effort into making it as nice as we can make it at this point, so we'll keep working on it. All right, Mark, you got anything on the BZA?
BZA meets tomorrow night, there's four things on the agenda. One, a little unusual, it was passed a year ago, and it's set for a review this year for a tattoo parlor business that's on Franklin Street. And two apartment complexes are going for variances tomorrow night. And a parking lot where you turn and go, if you're on Fourth Street and you're headed east, you turn, where you turn to go to the recycling plant. People on the south side of that Fourth Street want to turn that into a great big parking lot and fence the whole area, I'm not sure what the purpose is, maybe we'll hear about that tomorrow, but that's the fourth thing. To date, through five thirty-one, there have been forty-six transactions with BZA that affect the city and it's generated a thousand three hundred eighty-one dollars and fourteen cents. Council on Aging, we met yesterday, and it's a rather short meeting, but the important thing is that Council is the Chamber Member of the Month for June, and Friday, we're having a fifty-year anniversary celebration for the Council on Aging, and anybody can and wants to come by, it's kind of an all-day thing. There's gonna be activity all day long, so.
It's all day, but it's with that.
I think it's.
Fulton County Coral Club is performing. Fulton County Coral Club is performing.
Okay, Ruth, you got any? Ruth, you got anything on Tulloway, or anything else?
No, they, I'll meet every other month, so, next month.
So we wait for the excitement next month?
Yeah.
Brian, you got any on tree board, or?
I do, the tree board event, June third. They approved the spring work order with ugly truck tree service. The amount was just over thirteen thousand dollars for twenty tree removals and six preens. Hopefully, we get done on time and no storm problems between now and then. The other big news is that John Bowers resigned. So as we mentioned earlier, we're down to two members, and we need more. Keep going. Next meeting is July second, right here.
All right, that all, Brian?
That's it.
John, you got anything on the waterboard? The only thing that snooked in our last meeting was the fact they've raised the starting wage to nineteen dollars an hour from seventeen. Couldn't hire anybody at seventeen, everybody said they just couldn't, the way they come up on that seventeen dollars an hour, sounds pretty good, but it breaks down, it's thirty-four thousand a year. And in today's world, that's pretty striking. He said they're cranking up to nineteen an hour to start, and that is, that is coming into effect, I believe, on the first of July, that will go into effect. Basically, everything else is running fine. Basically, everything else is running fine, planned. Good. All right, anybody have anything else before we turn? Well, thank you everyone up here for being progressive-minded, for the community, for your service. Pleasure to be up here, we get, I think, a great unity among us and trying to do the best we can for our community. So thank you all for coming. Any votes in the chair, my folks up here?
Yep.
Here we go.